Good evening. The Regular Council Meeting for the City of Coppers Cove, held August 19th, 2025, is called to order at 7:05 PM. Please, rives for the invocation by Ms. Hart, start and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you could please, uh, with me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this time that we are able to gather and making decisions that are in the likeness of you, Lord. Continue to bless our families and our neighbors and our friends and cover and protection over our fire, our police, and all the city departments. Guide carefully our conversations here on the dais and also be with us as we make these decisions. Thank you for all your blessings. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
They've shown me the pledge, our nation's flag.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, please be seated. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mayor Yancey?
Here.
Christina Strophas?
Here.
Rita Hogan?
Here.
Sean Alzona?
Here.
John Hale?
Here.
Del Tredway?
Here.
Fawnia Hart?
Here.
Jack Smith?
Here.
All right. Everyone's in attendance. We move to item D announcements.
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
None for me, sir.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Fine.
Yes, sir. First, the city has refreshed and updated its website, so I encourage Mayor and Council to go to the city's website, our residents, go to the city website. It is a much cleaner website, less cluttered, and we can actually find stuff on the website. So, by all means, go to that website. In addition to that, Keep Coppers Cove Beautiful is beginning a new initiative. It's called Ten on Tuesday. So, on Tuesdays, go out, pick up trash, take pictures, send it to KCCB, and help make our city more beautiful. Next is the Street Maintenance Utility Town Halls. It's a Let's Fix Our Streets effort. We have a number of town halls that are coming up in September for residential on September 8th, 10th, and the 23rd at 6:00 PM here in the chambers, and then on September 27th at 10:00 AM, and that's a Saturday here. And then we have some very specific town halls for commercial, which is businesses. Those will be on September 6th, September 15th, and the 24th. And lastly, Mayor, I received notice and wanted to let the Mayor and Council and our residents know that our Fire Chief, Gary Young, has announced his retirement. He will be retiring after 36 years of service. And I just want to say thank you to Gary. Under Gary's leadership and in 36 years, Gary has established a service standard for all of our firefighters and our medical response teams. The technology within the Fire Department has greatly increased, and we can see that even with our residents because of a number of our emergency notifications. He's been in charge of emergency management for what seems like forever. It hasn't been forever, but it's, it almost seems like forever. Anybody that looks at emergencies knows that Gary is the person to talk to because he understands those processes. He will leave with Fire Station 3 nearly finished with expansion so that the west side of town will have the ability to have greater level of service with that building increased. And I'll also say that under, under Chief Young, the expectations of the Fire Department have elevated. Expectations of service, customer service, accountability of our team members, probably one of the most accountable departments that I have been and seen under his two and a half years as Fire Chief. Thank you, Chief Young, for your service to the city. We will celebrate Chief Young in future ceremonies, so this is not the last moment we're going to talk about him, but just wanted to announce it because we have received it and we've also put out a media release on that, so, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief Young, for your service, all 36 years. Appreciate it.
I have nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
Welcome back to school to all CCISD students, teachers, and staff.
No announcements. Okay. We move to item E, Citizens Forum.
At this time, citizens will be allowed to speak for a length of time not to exceed five minutes per person on any item which is listed on the agenda and items not listed on the agenda. Thirty minutes total has been allotted for this section. Pursuant to Section 551.042 of the Texas Open Meetings Act, any deliberation or decision about the subject of inquiry which is not listed on the agenda shall be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
Is there anyone to speak during Citizens Forum? State your name and address.
My name is Shawn Streeter. I live at 210 Coppers Cove, Overlook Drive Trail. And my, I got a complaint because this board here, especially you, Mayor, the chief back there, the one you just praised about, and the, and this community, y'all, y'all have held back some major information, and it's, and it's sad. It's really sad. Because this board and you, Mayor, and this chief put my safety, y'all put the community safety in danger, you put my grandson in danger, you put my whole family in, in, in the danger because y'all don't want to be transparent. Y'all don't want to let the community know about the drugs that was found out at the young station.
Sir, sir, sir.
Yes.
According to Section 2-57.3, during Citizens Forum, no personnel matters may be discussed.
But the, the city, I'm not, I'm not dealing with the city, I'm dealing with you as a community. That, that y'all are now, allowing the community to know the massive drugs that was found at the station, and that's why you fired three, four people. One, one, one was let go, and y'all let three more go. Then, what I also found out, did people talk? Y'all, and y'all made the Fire Department sign a NDA so they won't talk, but people talk. I've been doing this, uh, 26 years and everything, and I'm still an intermediate and everything. Whole state of Texas knows about this community. It is talking badly out in the community because people talk, and that what's out there is that chief knew about it for several months.
Sir, sir, I'm going to stop you right there. I've stated it once.
So you're not going to allow me to talk?
You cannot talk about personnel matters. It's in our Code of Ordinances.
Okay, then what are y'all going to do about the drugs?
Sir, I'm going to, I'm going to stop you right there.
Okay.
Game over.
Then what I need to do is?
Sir, sir.
Yes.
I've got control of the meeting.
I know that.
That's it.
That's fine.
You need, you need to sit in that.
Otherwise.
That's your prerogative, but your time here, talking during this Citizens Forum is over.
That's fine, then.
Sir, it's over. Is there anyone else to speak during Citizens Forum? Anybody? You're not all scared, are you? Just, all right. Okay, then we will move on to item F, Consent Agenda.
All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda considered separately. Item 1, Consideration in Action on Approval of City Council Special Meeting Minutes for July 31st, 2025, Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. Item 2, Consideration in Action on Approval of City Council Workshop Meeting Minutes for August 5th, 2025, Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. Item 3, Consideration in Action on Approval of City Council Regular Meeting Minutes for August 5th, 2025, Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. Item 4, Consideration in Action to Declare City-Owned Personal Property as Surplus and Disposal of Inoperable Equipment and Donation of Equipment to the Corial County Sheriff's Office, Brian Wires, Deputy Chief of Police. Item 5, Consideration in Action on Resolution Number 2025-16, Accepting the Quarterly Investment Report as Presented for the Quarter Ending June 30th, 2025, Per the Investment Policy, Stephanie Poppen, Assistant Director of Finance. Item 6, Consideration in Action Authorizing City Staff to Secure Services from Quick Roofing for Roof, Gutter, and Downsides Replacement for the Waste Water Collection, Street Maintenance and Drainage Departments Buildings, Scott Osborne, Director of Public Works. Item 7, Consideration in Action on Ordinance Number 2025-29, Amending the FY 2024-25 Budget for the City of Coppers Cove, Ryan Haberlaw, City Manager.
Council, is there any item you wish to pull and consider separately from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to be made?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item F 1 through 7.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Tredway, seconded by Ms. Hart. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We move to item G, Public Hearings in Action.
A governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item. Item 1, Public Hearing on the Proposed Property Tax Rate Increase for Fiscal Year 2025-26, Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget.
Thank you, Lisa.
The time is 7:17. We will open up the public hearing.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, City Manager. The public hearing is required by state law before we adopt a property tax rate that is higher than the lower of the voter approval tax rate or the no new revenue tax rate. On August 5th, 2025, City Council voted to propose a property tax rate of 0.686419 per $100 of taxable assessed value for fiscal year 2526. This proposed rate is above the no new revenue tax rate, which triggers the public hearing requirement. The notice of this hearing was posted in compliance with the truth in taxation requirements, so tonight's hearing gives taxpayers the opportunity to share their views on the proposed rate. City Council, uh, city staff recommends that City Council hold the public hearing on the proposed tax rate increase for fiscal year 2526.
Thank you, Arianna. Is there anyone to speak during public hearing? Go ahead.
Cheryl Lewis, 710 Bond Street, Coppers Cove. Do you have that chart that you showed us the last time about how much money it would be for the average household of the increase because of the increased percentage? I think you told us it would be somewhere between like $150 to $200 extra for our households based on the increased tax amount?
I believe that was an annual number.
It was an annual number.
If I remember correctly.
Oh, this one?
Correct.
Yes. $93.
Exactly, right. So is it, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, what would be so for the average household, is it the?
This $93 down here.
So, so depending on what your taxable value is, and none of us know what that is yet, because the statements don't normally come out until like October or so from Corial County about what our taxable values are?
True.
Yes.
This, this chart was based on an average taxable, uh, home state taxable value of $208,210.
Okay, so it's going to be somewhere in between $93 and $189, somewhere roughly in that, depending on what your value of your house is.
Yeah, it's going, it's going to depend on your, um, assessed value for your property, yes.
Got it, understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Anyone else to speak during the public hearing? All right, we will, the time is 7:20. We will close the public hearing. We will move to item H, Action Items.
Item 1, Consideration in Action on Resolution Number 2025-18, Approving and Adopting the FY 25-26 Budget for the Coppers Cove Economic Development Corporation. Fred Walsh, Executive Director of the Coppers Cove Economic Development Corporation.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Mayor, Council Members, Ms. Travilla, I am obviously not Fred. Mr. Walsh could not be here tonight. My name's Shawn Stevens. I'm the Assistant Executive Director for the Coppers Cove Economic Development Corporation. The Coppers Cove Economic Development Corporation has a responsibility and a legal mandate to create and approve a fiscal year budget in accordance to the Coppers Cove Economic Development Corporation bylaws. On May 28th, 2025, the proposed 25-26 budget was presented to the Board of Directors of the EDC for approval. No changes were requested, and the board has approved the budget as presented. Uh, I've attached, we've attached the attached, or attached the proposed budget to your packet, and I've also prepared this brief presentation. So, quick overview of our budget. Total income will be about 1.3, almost 1.4 million. We're estimating total expenditures will be 1.16. Total revenue is 6.4 million. Ideal fund balance is 254,152. Key highlights there, we're continuing to invest in personnel, marketing, professional services. We have plans for some significant capital improvements from reserves on some key development projects and continue to focus on small business, workforce, and incentive-based growth. These are kind of some of our new, newer initiatives, entrepreneurial and small business support. We've increased the budget for Shop Cove, which is our kind of home-based vendor market program, and entrepreneurial support. $3,000 budgeted for the annual hiring event, which we just held for 2025 about a month ago and had seven, 700-plus job seekers. And then a couple, some new projects. We're launching a $25,000 facade grant called the Business Improvement Grant to help improvements on commercial property. $50,000 towards workforce improvement, and $25,000 for other incentives. Our capital investment, $2 million in what we're calling Narrow's Business Part 2. This is 28 acres on Mashburn Drive that we acquired this last year. We have an EDA grant to bring infrastructure over to that property, so that 2 million will support that. A million dollars to start to build on, or start the process of designing and building a new office building on Patriot Circle, and $500,000 for infrastructure improvements. The EDC staff recommends that City Council approve Resolution Number 2025-18 and adopt the FY 2025-2026 budget as presented for the Coppers Cove Economic Development Corporation. And I'll take any questions Council has.
Council questions for Shawn? Okay. All right. Is there action to be taken on this item? Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I feel only fitting that Shawn, motion's for Shawn. I move that we approve Resolution Number?
Let's read it and make it official.
You're right.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 2025-18 and adopt the FY 2025-2026 budget as presented for the Coppers Cove Economic Development Corporation.
A second.
Motion made by Shawn, seconded by Rita? Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing, now all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Shawn.
Thank you, guys.
We move, we move to item H 2.
Consideration in Action on Approval of Ordinance Number 2025-24, Adopting the Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Years 2026 to 2030 and Approving the Official Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Year 2025-2026. Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget.
Thank you, Lisa, again. The next few items will finalize proposed budget 2526, so hopefully you won't see as much of me for the next few months until we start the process again. The plan that you have in front of you, the work on it began last December when departments submitted proposed capital projects for the next five years. Those proposals were based on population growth, service demands, and future needs. The draft plan was presented to you during workshop on March 4th, and there were several other discussions with the Council on this plan. Since then, staff has incorporated your direction and finalized those projects. Tonight's plan identifies project schedule to begin in '26 with funding either already approved or anticipated through certificates of obligation and other sources. A project summary is included in the agenda packet, and additional details are available on city's budget website. Fiscal year 2026 total investments is $27,230,952. By fund, general fund total is $3.7 million. Water and Sewer Fund elevated over $20 million. Soil Waste Fund, $60,000. Drainage Fund, $1.7 million, and Street Maintenance Fund, $1.7 million. So staff recommended, recommends approval of the attached ordinance, adopting fiscal year 26, 2030 CIP, and formally approving the 2526 plan.
Thank you, Arianna. Council, any questions for Ms. Beckman?
No.
Jack, any questions?
No.
Okay. Holds us in suspense every time.
I didn't know I had to say no.
Is there a motion to be made on item H 2?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-24, adopting the Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Year 2026 to 2030, and formally approving the CIP for Fiscal Year 2025-2026.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by who down here? Give the ladies. Ms. Strophas? Any other questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move to item H 3.
Consideration in Action on Approval of Ordinance Number 2025-25, Adopting the Capital Outlay Plan for Fiscal Year 2026-2030 and Approving the Official Capital Outlay Plan for Fiscal Year 2025-2026. Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget.
Okay, similar to the CIP plan, work on this plan began last December when departments submitted requests for equipment and vehicle replacements or new purchases. Those requests were reviewed and updated by the departments and also the Capital Outlay Committee. Factors we looked at included service demands, equipment age, maintenance cost, and future needs. Again, the draft plan was presented to you on March the 4th workshop, and we have incorporated all those directions and guidance received by Council. The plan covers major items such as vehicles, equipment, and assets like PPE for the Fire Department. The summary of the plan is included in your packet, and then full details are available on city's budget website. The fiscal year 2026 totals by fund are as follows. General Fund, close to $3 million. Water and Sewer Fund, 1.7. Soil Waste, $430,000. Golf Course, $184,000. Drainage Fund, $84,000. And Street Maintenance Fund, $400,000. So the total fiscal year 26 capital outlay is $5.8 million. So staff's recommendation is that you approve the ordinance, adopting the FY 2630 capital outlay plan, and formally approving the 2526 COP plan.
Thank you, Council. Any questions for Ms. Beckman? All right. Thank you, thank you, Jack, I appreciate that. All right, is there a motion to be made on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-25, adopting the Capital Outlay Plan for Fiscal Year 2026-23, or to 2030, and formally approving the COP for Fiscal Year 2025-2026.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move to item H 4.
Consideration in Action on Approval of Ordinance Number 2025-26, Adopting the Personnel Improvement Plan for Fiscal Year 2026-2030 and Approving the Official Personnel Improvement Plan for Fiscal Year 2025-26. Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget.
This is the last long-range plan, uh, personal improvement plan. The timeline is similar with CIP and COP. The personal plan, however, is divided into two parts. We have the funded positions and unfunded or future needs. This structure helps identify which positions are supported in upcoming year and also highlights staffing gaps that could be addressed in future if additional revenue becomes available. Again, a summary page is in your packet with full details available on city's budget website. Fiscal year 2526 funded positions by fund that include any new reclassification and financial impact are as follows. The General Fund has 202.05 positions, includes reclassification of Chief of Police to Chief of Police, Assistant City Manager. Financial impact is $58,705. Water and Sewer Fund has a total of 60.5 positions, includes reclassification of the Director of Public Works to Director of Public Works/Assistant City Manager, and reclassification of three wastewater operator positions to Lead Operator. Financial impact of these changes is $69,537. Soil Waste Fund has 31.5 positions, no new or reclassified, reclassified positions, so there's no financial impact. Golf Course, 3.2 positions, no new reclassified positions, no financial impact. Drainage Fund, 12.5 positions, includes one new laborer position, financial impact 49,911. Street Maintenance Fund, 9.5 positions, no new or reclassified positions. And Municipal Court, Security Fund, 0.25 positions, and there's no new or reclassified positions. So total, all funds, 319.5 positions, and total financial impact of all these changes, So staff recommends that you approve the attached ordinance, adopting FY 2630 Personnel Improvement Plan and formally approve the 2526 plan.
Council, questions for Ms. Beckman? Comments? All right, is there a motion to be made on item H 4?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025-26, adopting the Personnel Improvement Plan, PIP, for Fiscal Year 2026 through 2030, and formally approving the PIP for Fiscal Year 2025 to 2026. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hart, seconded by Mr. Hale. Any? Motion made by Ms. Hart, seconded by Mr. Hale. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move on to item H five.
Consideration and action on ordinance number 2025-23 adopting the city's fee schedule. Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget.
The fee schedule is adopted by ordinance and updated annually to reflect any legislative policy or operational changes. The majority of updates, including the tier rate study and departmental fee adjustments, have been reviewed and discussed with you. Since that time, there are two new items that we would like to bring to your attention. A new $20 zoning public notice sign fee under development services as required by state law effective September 1. And then also clarifying language under the new book, Holland Rate, specifying that an active commercial charge account and minimum of 130 tons per billing cycle are required to qualify. So in Exhibit A, you see all the changes that we already discussed with council in yellow, and those two changes are highlighted in orange. So with those additions, staff recommends approval of the attached ordinance adopting the city's fee schedule.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Beckman? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to be made on item H five?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-23 adopting the city's updated fee schedule.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Tredway. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move to item H six.
Consideration and action on ordinance number 2025-27 approving and adopting the budget and plan of municipal services of the City of Copper's Cove for fiscal year 2025-2026. Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget.
As required by our city charter and state law, the city manager presented the proposed budget on June the 17th, and a public hearing was held on July 31st. No comments were received at that hearing. Council has participated in workshops from March through July, and all changes you have directed have been incorporated into the budget that is before you tonight. The total operating budget, which includes the general fund, water and sewer fund, soil waste, and the golf course, is at $57,289,921. Other funds, a total $20,651,212. Combined, the total fiscal year 25-26 budget is $77,941,133. The proposed budget was filed with the city clerk as required by the local government code, and the adoption of the budget must occur before the adoption of the tax rate, which is next. Staff recommends approval of the attached ordinance adopting the fiscal year 25-26 budget and plan of municipal services by record vote.
Questions? All right. A motion to be made on item H six?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-27 approving and adopting the budget and plan of municipal services of the City of Copper's Cove for fiscal year 2025-2026.
My second.
All right, this is a... You made the motion. Anybody second? Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Strophas made the motion, Ms. Hogan seconded. Any other discussion? This is a roll call vote. So...
Christina Strophas?
Aye.
Rita Hogan?
Aye.
Sean Alzona?
Aye.
John Hale?
Aye.
Del Tredway?
Aye.
Vanya Hart?
Aye.
Jack Smith?
Aye.
The vote is seven zero. Motion carries. All right. We move to item H seven. We're not through with you, Arianna.
Consideration and action on ordinance number 2025-28 adopting the proposed property tax rate for fiscal year 2025-2026. Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget.
On August the 5th, council proposed a rate of 0.686419 for $100 valuation. This proposed rate is higher than the current year's rate of 0.661043, higher than the no new revenue rate of 0.641782, and equal to the voter approval rate of 0.686419. The no new revenue and voter approver rates were calculated by the Corial County Tax Assessor and Collector. In compliance with the truth in taxation requirement under Tax Code Chapter 26, the required public hearing was held prior to this item. The notice of the hearing was properly published in the newspaper, on the city's website, and also on the public access channel. By law, the budget must be adopted before the tax rate, which council already acted earlier this evening. State also requires the adoption of the tax rate be by record vote with at least 60% majority. Mayor, at this time, staff recommends that council adopts the attached ordinance by record vote, and the motion must be read exactly as provided to comply with state law.
All right, Counsel, any questions for Arianna? All right, anybody making the motion, if there's a motion, must read the tax rate language as required by state law. Who can speak well? Did you, did you volunteer yourself?
Mr. Mayor, is it?
Yes.
You're ready. It's gonna take a minute. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 68.6419 cents per $100 taxable assessed valuation, which is effectively a 6.96% increase in the tax rate of a calculated no new revenue tax rate and a 2.54 cent increase of the current tax rate, and approve ordinance number 2025-28 adopting and setting the 2025 tax rate of 68.6419 cents per $100 taxable assessed valuation, of which 45.4051 cents is for maintenance and operations, and 23.2368 cents is for interest and sinking funds for the repayment of bonded debt. This tax rate will raise more taxes for the maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. The tax rate will effectively be raised by 10.90% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $44.64. The tax rate for interest and sinking will be increased by 8.66% and will raise taxes for interest and sinking on a $100,000 home by $18.51.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Alzona. So eloquently, seconded by Mr. Hale. Any discussion?
Do it more like a story next time.
All right.
It's that way every year.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute, this is a roll call vote. Excuse me.
Christina Strophas?
Aye.
Rita Hogan?
Aye.
Sean Alzona?
Aye.
John Hale?
Aye.
Del Tredway?
Aye.
Vanya Hart?
Aye.
Jack Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Arianna. We, nope, we got one more. Item eight, H eight.
Consideration and action on approving resolution number 2025-19, which ratifies a vote to approve and adopt the budget for fiscal year 2025-2026 and the vote to adopt the tax rate for fiscal year 2025-2026. Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget.
State law, specifically local government code section 102-007(c), requires this additional step whenever the adopted budget raises more revenue from property taxes than the prior year. This ratification is separate from the vote to adopt the budget and separate from the vote to adopt the tax rate. For fiscal year 25-26, the adopted budget includes an increase of $1,075,439 in property tax revenues compared to last year. That includes an increase of $482,799 in general fund and $592,640 in the interest and sinking fund. Staff recommends that council approves the attached resolution ratifying the vote on the budget and tax rate as required by state law.
All right, Counsel, any questions for Arianna?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion we approve, we approve resolution number 2025-19 to ratify the vote on the budget and tax rate for the City of Copper's Cove for fiscal year 2025-2026 as required by state law.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Tredway. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I know, I'm done. Thank you, until next year.
Did a good job. Not very many times did you get a applause after a tax rate. Okay, we move to item H nine.
Presentation by the Copper's Cove Chamber of Commerce detailing quarterly activities and expenditures related to the Visitor's Bureau and consideration and action on approval of payments for qualifying expenses related to the third quarter of fiscal year 2024-25. Beth Gaelic Carney, President of the Copper's Cove Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and Mr. Haverlaw. I am here to request reimbursement for the Visitor Bureau for quarter three of 2024 in the amount of $26,124.01. In that quarter, we hosted Rabbit Fest, had a very good turnout with about 50% of the attendees coming from out of town. We've improved our tourism technology by adding a update. It updates itself every 15 minutes, the community calendar that is on the Visitor Bureau website, copperscove.com, and also the Discover Copper's Cove app. We also moved downtown. Thank you, everyone, for coming to our grand opening. If you haven't been there yet, please come and check it out. We've seen a large increase in visitors to the office ever since we moved down there, people requesting information about Copper's Cove. So it's very nice to see the visibility has helped us a lot with that. In addition to that, we are collaborating with the EDC and the Police Department for their upcoming events, and we're going to host those on the Discover Copper's Cove app as well. And then, this really isn't Visitor Bureau related, but we are turning the old building into a business education and entrepreneurial center, and we're working on that right now. Also, we are working on applying for some grants for downtown beautification with the Visitor's Bureau. So that is, if anyone has any questions, I know that was all in the packet, but I just thought I'd give you a little reminder.
Thank you, Beth. Any questions for Beth? All right, is there a motion to be made on item H nine?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we appropriate the eligible payment amount not to exceed $26,124.01 in authorized payment to the Chamber of Commerce.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Alzona, seconded by Mr. Hale. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
We move to item H ten.
Consideration and action on approving the Copper's Cove Economic Development Corporation bylaws. Fred Welch, Executive Director of the Copper's Cove Economic Development Corporation.
Thank you, Lisa. Hello again, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Haverlaw. Again, Sean Stevens, Assistant Executive Director for the Copper's Cove Economic Development Corporation. The Copper's Cove EDC is required to have its board of directors review and amend the CCEDC bylaws at a minimum of every two years. According to Texas Local Government Code, Section 501.064a, on April 18th, 2003, the revised CCEDC bylaws were presented to the city council and approved. On June 25th, 2025, the EDC bylaws were presented to the EDC Board of Directors for approval, but no action was taken. The board directed staff to make revisions that were given and bring the bylaws back to the next meeting. On July 30th, 2025, the board of directors approved the revisions to the bylaws. You should have a red line copy as part of your packet. Most of the major changes were around the Assistant Executive Director role and that position. So the Copper's Cove Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors and staff recommend the city council approve the Copper's Cove Economic Development Corporation bylaws as presented.
All right, Counsel, you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Rashawn, yes.
Yes, I would just like to offer a recommendation. Is there any way we can highlight the revisions for whenever there are future changes with the bylaws?
We will take that under consideration in the future.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, action to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the Copper's Cove Economic Development Corporation bylaws as presented.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Hart, seconded by Mr. Hale. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We move to item H eleven.
Consideration and action on appointments to the Board of Adjustment to fill places one, two, and four. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor and Counsel, in an effort to obtain qualified applicants, a vacantly announcement was released to the media, and staff received three applications that include Brian Smock, Patrick Boone, Angela Robinson for appointment to the Board of Adjustment to fill vacancies in places four, two, and one. These BOA appointments are on staggered terms. With that, staff recommend city council review the applications submitted for appointment to the Board of Adjustment to fill places four, two, and one.
All right, Counsel, there are three vacancies, there are three names given. I think in your packet, it shows what the terms are for these, each one of these individuals. Is there any other questions for Mr. Lewis? Is there a motion to be made on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation to approve Patrick J. Boone and Angela Robinson.
Want to go ahead and state what place?
Patrick J. Boone, place one, and Angela Robinson, place two.
Am I missing something?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Brian Smock for place four on the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, so there's a nomination for Brian on place four. There's a nomination for Pat Boone for place one. Is that right, Dale?
I'll make a correction. Angela Robinson is place one, and Patrick Boone is place two.
Okay. Any other nominations? All right. Cease the nominations. Is there a motion to be made on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the nominated people for the positions they're nominated for.
Second.
I followed, I was tracking.
Did you get that, Lisa?
Yes, sir, I did.
All right. All right, any other items, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We move to item H twelve.
Consideration and action on Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, granting a variance to Article One, Chapter Twelve, Section twelve point five dash one, sale of alcoholic beverages near a school, church, hospital, daycare center, or childcare facility for the property located at one-one-two East Avenue D, Copper's Cove, Texas. Ryan Havelaw, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and Council, we have received a request for variance to check our Code of Ordinance, Section twelve point five dash one, which is the sale of alcohol that is restricted within a certain number of feet of certain types of organizations. This one specifically is in the downtown area, it's within three hundred feet of a church, and that's why the variance is required by council, should you so wish to approve it, in the attached ordinance. The church in question has also provided a letter of support for the requested variance, and so staff's recommendation is that you take action on the attached resolution.
Right, council, you have any questions for Mr. Havelaw? Is there a motion to be made on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Ms. Strofus. Okay, any other discussion? Let the record reflect that Councilman Smith has abstained from voting on this item. All right, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right, we move to item, uh, H thirteen.
Consideration and action on authorizing the City Manager to execute a construction agreement with North Star Elite Construction and Consulting to perform all interior finish work associated with the construction of the senior center. James Neely, Park Superintendent.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Thank you, Ms. Lisa. Before you deny it, it's the last major bid for the senior center. I'm going to run through the background real quick. In January of twenty twenty-four, we purchased the property located on one-ninety and Walker Place Boulevard for three hundred and eighty-five thousand. In December of twenty twenty-four, we entered into a construction agreement with Clearspan Structures for three hundred and thirteen, two hundred and fifty-one thousand. In twenty twenty-five of March, we entered into a construction agreement with HCS in the amount of one million three hundred and thirty-nine, three hundred and sixty. And then in May of twenty twenty-five, we entered into an agreement with Texas Home Pro LLC for five hundred and ninety-seven thousand. On June fourteenth of twenty twenty-five, staff published bid number twenty twenty-five ten fifty-four, requesting bids to complete the interior finish. On July second, we opened the bids, receiving three bids in total. North Star Elite Construction and Consulting, seven hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred. Texas Home Pro, eight hundred forty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-six and forty cents. Seneca Construction, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred. After evaluating the submitted bids, the architect provided a recommendation to award the contract to North Star Elite Construction and Consulting. With that, we recommend that you authorize the City Manager to execute a construction agreement with North Shore Elite Construction and Consulting in the amount of seven hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Council, you have any questions for Mr. Neely? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
No question, yes.
I just have a statement to ask. For the, when totaling all the numbers, I got a total of seven hundred and fifteen, three eighty-three, so I would like the motion to reflect that number rather than the seven hundred and fifteen, five hundred.
And that's the total amount of the individual components that were listed?
Yes.
Okay. So is that a motion?
Well, I can go ahead and do that.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I would like a motion to authorize the City Manager to execute a construction agreement with North Star Elite Construction and Consulting in the amount of seven hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Harden, seconded by Ms. Hogan?
Yep.
Okay. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did want to ask this prior to the motion, I just didn't get to it, but, um, was there any consideration to, I mean, Texas Home Pro has been, they did most of this project already, correct?
They have, they're doing all the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. While the, both organizations will work together, that's essentially what my job is on this project. We looked at both bids, both Texas Home Pro and North Star. We feel that North Star is competitive, of competitive and able to fulfill it, therefore, we're recommending the lowest bid. Obviously, you guys have the decision to select any bid that you want funding allows, so it's totally up to you guys.
I'm just curious about that, because I know they've been doing most of it, and maybe it was tied in, maybe their bid would have been a little better.
Uh, while it is possible, I doubt it with the way that the scope of work was written, because the scope of work did include all just the finishes, there was no carryover for the mechanical, electrical, plumbing. If they encompass that, that's kind of on them, because, I mean, they do have the MEP, so they know what's covered under that scope already. This was a very extensive scope. North Star has stated that they have everything, both architecture and our engineers have reviewed the bids and tell us that North Star is a competitive bid, and their recommendation is to go with North Star, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, motion made. Second, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, James.
Thank you, James. We move to item H fourteen.
Discussion and direction regarding a request by the Copper's Cove Historical Society for a waiver or sponsorship of water utility costs for the Allen House. Ryan Havelaw, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and Council, there's some history in the background on what the Allen House is, so I'm not going to go into that piece. But in, on February fourth of this year, you approved the attached lease agreement with the Copper's Cove Historical Society, which was executed the very next day. The Historical Society has been fulfilling the terms of the agreement, and very recently, we received a request by email, and then with the subsequent attached letter, that the Historical Society is requesting that City Council either waive the water cost to provide water at the Allen House, or to sponsor the water usage at that site until it becomes operational. There's some dialogue and interchange in that email thread, which provides a little bit more clarity on what the request is. And I also provided a very quick analysis of what the water usage might be, what that base rate, and then the volumetric charge would be just for water, and that's, just to clarify, the request is just for the water usage at this location. And so, in terms of financial impact, it's, it's not a budgeted expense, but it's also not a budgeted unrecoverable revenue item either. And so, with that being said, I do know that our representatives from the Copper's Cove Historical Society are here, letter signed by Mr. Gallin, and Ms. Kelly, I really appreciate her dialogue back and forth, and provided some clarity on this as well. And so, if you have any questions or concerns, they're more than able to fulfill that. So, Mayor, with that, I suggest that, Mayor, that the council provide direction on this, as this will, would require an amendment to the lease agreement if City Council does support waiving the water costs. So, Mayor and Council.
All right. So as Ryan said, this is, this is not a, a vote action item, this is direction. You've got John and Raymond.
Ray.
Everybody else.
Mr. Yells. And I'd like to address the council too, once, once you guys give direction.
Go ahead.
We've got some things. Ryan, you had, had a question about the plan, and James Nolan, the guy that we have contracted with to do the restoration plan, has been working on it, and I would love to have had it tonight, but he said probably by the end of this week, and I will get you guys a copy as soon as we get that. And as the lessie, just coming before you, let you know what we've been doing there, we, we've cleaned out all the stuff that we've been allowed to throw out, it was a big trailer full, so we cleaned all that out, and we've cleaned up a little bit at the house. We've got a couple fundraisers coming up to help add our fundraising for the Allen House, and we're just, we're moving along, and hopefully, we'll have this planned, and then we'll get, get on the, do our grants, and see boots on the ground and construction happening, once we get that all in place. But this request, Kelly can address that, it was her idea to present it, I just signed the paper. So if Kelly wants to say something about, if you have any questions about why we're requesting this waiver, Kelly can answer that. You don't have to speak, Kelly, but if they have a question.
No, I can answer questions.
Okay.
You're throwing her to the wolves.
No, no.
You want to state why you're making this request?
We have a lot that we are, have planned for the Allen House events, things like that. Part of what we want to do is, we want to get the lot, the yards fixed up, so that we can start entertaining outside and getting the, because we've got a lot of positive feedback from the neighbors that are throughout that neighborhood, they're very excited about what we're doing. So we, we want to work with landscapers, and to do different projects, donating different sections of the yard. So in order to do that, we need water. And right now, the Allen House has no income coming in at all, so we need your help with that.
Okay. Council, questions, comments, direction? Yes, Ms. Harden?
So, so from what I'm hearing is, is that there's no income coming in right now, and you want to get it yard-ready for, for future events and things like that, so could it be a, so are we looking maybe just temporarily till you get the yard looking right, and then?
Okay, so the plan is to have this an income property.
Okay.
So we will host events, it'll be a wedding venue, things like that, for whatever anybody wants to rent it for. We clearly can't rent that out in the state that it is in now. So while the house is under construction, and we are getting grants and everything lined up, the plan is to hold events at the property outside for fundraising. In order to do that, we need to have the property presentable, because this is, this is what we're doing. We're trying to beautify it and bring it, restore it back to its original glory.
Okay, so it's a temporary thing, not for the entire time being in the Allen House?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, did you have a recommendation?
What did you say?
Yeah, we have a recommendation. We recommend that you approve this, or at least provide direction to approve that to the, to the council.
I'm thinking, I was thinking a little bit along the lines of a term.
Oh, a term.
It's hard to, to detail what the term would be, because the, the construction plan is going to be in phases, because we have to raise the money as we go. So we can't have something just going full-on around as restoration without funds. So we have, when the bid comes in, or the plan comes in, then we will have an idea of what we're doing, and as we go along, we'll be able to update you as to what's the next step is.
Mr. Mayor, the, the plan, James Nolan is presenting a plan that's going to be extremely detailed, and, in phases, and he will only draw off the grants that we get, and we'll probably have to get multiple grants. We don't know what it's going to come in at. In ninety-seven, the council put about a hundred and sixty-five or a hundred and seventy-thousand dollars, not into restoring, but into renovating the Allen House, because it was not designated as a historical spot at that point in time. The next year, it was. And the previous Historical Society from eighty-seven to ninety-seven did a lot of fundraising and all that during that time, and they turned, their lease ran out, and they decided not to renew the lease. And then the city invested in it and, and got it renovated, and then we used it all during the two thousands and up through two thousand and fifteen, and it was just in fantastic shape. It's, it's a beautiful place to hold a venue. A lot, I spent a lot of time in there. When we greeted new people that came into the city, a new Parks Director or something like that, the City Secretary would put something on there for the public to come in and meet and greet, and those types of things. And we want to restore that and have it as a venue, and Ms. Hogan, her suggestion was turn it into a mini wedding venue, which is a possibility, because in Belton, there's a house that's sort of equivalent, a little bit different, but it's a mini wedding venue. And weddings, obviously, those of you that have daughters, it gets pretty expensive, you know, and if you want to, we aren't saying have a cheap wedding, but at least it'd be a little more reasonable than having a huge wedding. But many, many, many wedding venues are becoming very popular, right, Ms. Hogan?
Yes, micro wedding venue.
Micro weddings.
Council, looking for direction?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to recommend to the council that we waive the water fees for a period of one year, and then revisit it next year. Around this time.
Okay.
I support.
I support that.
Yes, Ms. Harden? Do you support?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a direction to waive the water fees for one year?
Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
The lease agreement has a anniversary date, and there are specific requirements that the Historical Society must meet on that anniversary date, which is to come report to the council. And would council be amenable to waiving it until the anniversary date, and then when the Historical Society presents to the council, that could be a decision point at that same time, because they'll be in front of you, they'll be able to share all the things they've done. Would that, would the council be okay with that?
I'm okay.
It's, it's February fifth, so, I mean, basically, it's six months right now, and then when that date comes, council could make another decision. And then we'll follow it up on the anniversary date. It'll just make amending the agreement a little bit easier.
Actually, you could give it for ten years, we've got the lease for ten years. You need a little levity in here, it's getting, it's getting late, it's getting late, Ryan.
They were talking about water.
No, we, we agree with that, that's fine, the anniversary's great, we had a great ceremony where we signed that, that lease with you guys, and we appreciated it, and thanked the council for allowing us to lease that for ten years.
Is that, is that amenable to council?
Yes.
Six months?
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a question, Mr. Hale?
No.
Let's, so you've got direction, move to anniversary date, and then we'll revisit. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you in October at our festival and our fundraiser.
Yes.
Got it. All right. We're going to move to item H fifteen, of which I've never had fifteen items in the action items, but we're going to have it.
Discussion and direction on providing utilities for a community garden. Ryan Havelaw, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and Council, a community garden has been a discussion for our city and our partners for a very long time. You can see in the agenda background that it has been around for a very long time. Most recently, and a community garden requires a couple of things. It requires land, it requires water, and it requires an entity or organization that is interested in coordinating its activities, and all of that has finally come together. CCISD has provided the land where the community garden will be located. In fact, they've already fenced that area because we are a community, well, not in our mission statement or vision statement, we are a city of deer all over the place, and they eat almost everything. So they put a fence up for that community garden. The Five Hills Garden Club has come out, and they have been generating interest. And it was at the moment when one of our Development and Leadership Academy students, Teresa Davis, did a presentation on a community garden and the value of that community garden and the potential use of that, where the garden club really took hold of it and began generating even more support. And so, we have been meeting on this since the discussion of a community garden has been around for a while. The idea, no firm commitment has ever been made, but the idea is that the city would provide the water for that community garden. It is for the community. It's open to the community to access and use and reap the benefits of it. And so, that is one piece of direction that I'm looking for from City Council. The second piece is the garden club has actually asked if the city would be willing to also provide electric service to the community garden. Now, there's a couple of nuances that are in question as to what that exactly means, but I take it in meaning that we would pay, as the city would pay, for the monthly electricity usage and cost for that location. What that doesn't mean is, in my mind, is that doesn't mean that we're going to install all of the electrical infrastructure and pay for the installation of that equipment in order to put the electricity there. I haven't had that discussion with the garden club, but I'm looking for your direction on both of those. Our Public Works team has actually met with the garden club because in utilizing our water distribution system, provide water at a community garden, it would immediately and typically require a backflow prevention device, which is, one, fairly expensive for this type of an activity. And so, our Public Works team has actually come up with some really good alternatives to requiring that. And so, they've been meeting, discussing that, and the garden club seems to be taking hold of those alternatives from a backflow prevention device. With that being said, I'm just looking for your direction on water, covering the water cost for a community garden, and two, covering the monthly electricity cost for the community garden as well.
The ISD put up the fence?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ryan, I'd be curious about the, the cost, like, I thought the same thing about electricity. Like, does it already exist, or do we need to install it? However that worked out, then how would it be controlled? And if there's water there, how would that be controlled so that it's not either vandalized or stolen or abused? I'd be curious to see what, what all those things are as well.
And we can definitely work on that. This is not Council's approval. This is you just giving me directions so that we can begin doing that type of analysis and determinations. And those are good questions because I can take those and make sure that we address those.
So I guess I'd be asking for the analysis?
So you're giving me direction, you, as an individual Councilmember, are recommending that we proceed with at least continuing those discussions and developing the analysis on it?
That is my recommendation.
I concur.
I agree.
Everybody agree? Sean, you're the star tonight.
I was about to say that, Mayor. Thank you.
All right.
Direction received.
That completes all of our action items. And I'm sure you're waiting for the city manager's report. However.
It's very long, Mayor.
I have prevailed upon Mr. Havelaw to delay that till the next meeting, so we will not have city manager's report. So we move to item J, items for future agendas.
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
None at this time.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
I don't have anything.
Can we put the city manager's report on the next agenda? It will be. All right, thank you. All right, there is no executive session, so guess what? The time is 8:20. We stand adjourned.